All right, let's get started. Welcome to everybody to the January 11th, 2020, or 2021 meeting of Falls Church City Council. Appreciate you joining us tonight. Madam Clerk, do you have an announcement or notice you need to read?
I do. This meeting has been posted and will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the city council will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings. Sorry, I'm getting some background noise here. There we go. Public comments will be accepted virtually, and those who sign up to speak in advance will speak via the meeting video platform. To speak on a public hearing item or provide general public comment, the public must complete a speaker form at www.fallschurchva.gov/publiccomment before noon on the day of the council meeting. Following submission of the form, they will receive instructions to join the virtual council meeting. Written public comments, including those regarding public hearing items sent in advance of the meeting, will be accepted at City Clerk@fallschurchva.gov and will be presented to council daily and during the written comments section of the meeting tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And again, this meeting has been called to order. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
I will. Ms. Conley, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Duncan?
Yes, here.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes, here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Ms. Shontz Hisscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, council.
All right, thank you, and thank you all for joining us this evening. When I move to the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Messner, you've got the flags there. I would just ask all on this call and those in attendance virtually from the public to please stand and rise, and please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's move on to the receipt of public comments and city council requests. Madam Clerk, do you want to summarize the written comments for us?
I do, thank you. Megan Bartholomew wrote to ask that council say no to some of the development projects that contain retail in light of the outlook for those businesses. Chris Kamela asked that the largest tree on the UVA VT property be preserved during any development. Sean Dakin of 124 Whittier Circle asked that council pass a temporary ordinance that forgives parking fines for all frontline workers while during the COVID-19 emergency, and that equity issues be considered when issuing parking tickets. Robert Bartolata submitted a report of the Workforce Development Board meeting. Stuart Gould said he objected to taxpayer dollars being spent to changing the name of the high school. The following signed a letter with comments to address the new drawings for the Broad and Washington project from the perspective of Lawton Street residents. Mary Chavez of 215 Lawton Street, Stephen Kim Deering of 104 Lawton Street, Genevieve Udhar and Rick Ziegler of 213 Lawton Street, Linda and Moctar Kamel 216 Lawton Street, Lauren and Anthony Thomas 310 Lawton Street, Darren and Susan Robertson 201 East Broad Street, Erica, Eric and Claudia Schultz 107 Lawton Street, Diane Duggan 102 Lawton Street, Scott and Julie Boudin 212 Lawton Street, John Coleman 214 Lawton Street, and Shelley Wang and Mike Eblen 308 Lawton Street. Chris Maselli of 138 Rolling Trace also wrote to ask that council pass a temporary ordinance forgiving parking fines for frontline workers during COVID-19, but later rescinded the request after speaking to the chief of police. Christina New of 413 Lincoln Avenue asked for an end to COVID-19 emergency restrictions based on constitutional issues. Erica and Claudia Schultz also provided an additional letter asking that the height of the Broad and Washington project be decreased on Lawton Street. Meredith Johnstone and Thomas Carter from the State Theater provided a letter outlining their concerns with the Broad and Washington project and proposed parking plans during the development. Thank you.
All right, that's it, isn't it?
It is.
Let's move on. Is there any public comment, not written comment, but anyone who wants to publicly address council this evening?
No, I did not have anybody sign up for that.
All right, let's move on to council requests. Are there any council requests? All right, let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hi, Dave Snyder, I did put on my hand.
Oh, I did not see that, sorry about that.
It's okay, no problem at all. First of all, I'm curious about the disposition of the letters from Lawton Street and from State Theater, if they'll be forwarded to the developer, and if there'll be some dialogue from city staff to the developer. That would be request number one. Request number two is for a closed session to discuss security issues at our next work session in view of the recent event that apparently may spill over to state and local government, the events from Washington DC of last week. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Duncan, did you have your hand up as well, and then Ms. Hardy also? Mr. Duncan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question to the manager. Why did we fly the flag at half-staff for the Capitol Police Officer on the day that it was designated?
Councilmember Duncan, yes. Governor Northam asked that the flags of the Commonwealth of Virginia, all across the Commonwealth, be flown at half-mast in honor of Capitol Hill Police Officer Sicknick, and that was done. The mayor also requested that the city flag join the flag of the Commonwealth in flying at half-mast, and that also has been done in honor of Officer Sicknick. And I would add also that the Falls Church Police Department does have their covering over their badge in solidarity and in honor of Officer Sicknick as well.
Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
I had a request along the lines of Mr. Snyder, whether we should have a briefing on regional security preparations for inauguration, given kind of the national and local level security threat.
So, thank you for both of those requests from Councilmember Snyder and Councilmember Hardy, and we do have our Director of Emergency Management, Joe Carter, on this call, so he's hearing that request, and we will be scheduling that as quickly as we can at a time to have that discussion with the city council.
Great. And my second one was, next Monday is Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and I think it's traditionally our day of service, and I think we issued our proclamation for that. I wanted to see whether staff had any specific opportunities, service opportunities, that they would like council or staff or kind of the community to participate in. I know that in times of hardship like this, everyone's looking for ways to give back where possible, and especially this year where we can do it safely.
So, thank you, Councilmember Hardy, and I do regret, I've not had a chance to have that discussion with staff, to see if we do have ideas on a service activity that we could all participate in together. I do know that our HHS staff have been extremely hard-pressed through this pandemic, just in terms of the workload that we have in that department, and so I have not been able to get back with you on that request, but we'll certainly try to do that.
I will ford around something that elementary PTAs are organizing, if we would like to just jump on and provide extra sets of hands on that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or requests? All right, Mr. Shields, are you ready for the city manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Let me start actually with some of the announcements that came out just over this weekend with respect to vaccination, and Joe Carter is our staff lead to coordinate vaccination of our Phase 1B staff members, and Nancy Benson and our OCOM and Joe are working together to reach out to our senior population to help them access the information they need, the 75-years-and-older population in the city, with the information that they will need in order to get their vaccination scheduled. And so let me turn it over to Mr. Carter, if I may, our Director of Emergency Operations, for a brief report on those activities that the public needs to know.
Good morning, I'm sorry, good evening, I get all my days mixed up. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, I hope you guys are doing well tonight. As Wyatt said, this weekend, there was information that came out about the vaccination process. First, I want to briefly just tell you what's going on with employees, and then I will touch on the 75-years-and-older population. So with our employees, that will be in 1B, will be all essential workers. We have defined them as police, sheriff, dispatch, and a few other essential workers within the city that will be able to be vaccinated. We will, although be going through the Fairfax Health Department, our vaccination process will actually be through the occupational health clinics. So I am waiting on information from Colin, should be getting it tomorrow, and I will put that information out to the employees who are in the 1B process in order to get that done. I don't have specifics on exactly how that will take place as of yet. I will have a point of contact within the occupational health clinics that will address that at the time that I get his or her information. In regards to the population 75-years-of-age or older, as you may know or not know, they will also be within the 1B category. They will be able to be vaccinated in a few different ways. One, they will be able to go through the regular healthcare provider, or they will be able to reach out to Fairfax County Health Department directly. To be honest with you, the phone line right now has been somewhat overwhelmed with calls, and they are in the process of getting their website set up so people can go online if they choose to and schedule an appointment that way. That should be done within the next few days. I think they were having a little bit of a hiccup with the online process, but that's the two different, three different actually, ways of, you know, they can go through and get that done. I will be glad to answer any questions you have about that process, but that's what we have been told, and that's what we're, the direction that we're going as of right now. I should probably also tell you, we do have a plan in place through our OCOM to get that messaging out to our public as soon as we get the accurate information, and as soon as we get the thumbs up that they're ready to go and they can accept either the phone call or the online registration.
All right, thank you. We've got a few questions, Ms. Hardy, and then Mr. Snyder.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carter. I know that all of this has been late-breaking since Friday night, so I think in general it's good news that we're part of the 11 districts that kind of got the early go-ahead to move into 1B, so this really does offer much hope. On the communications side, I think I sent a message over the weekend around the same thing, but I feel like we need to obviously push hard to get the word out. That 75-plus population are also the ones that are not going to be online or on social media as much, which is what we really rely on. So if we could rely on more creative channels, whether it's our civic groups or flyers, pushing out to kind of trusted sources, I know that we obviously have people who used to go to the senior center, so if we have contact information for those folks relying on neighborhood listservs, that might be a good way just to get the word out, so get them registered. Second, I was gonna make a suggestion that for what I've seen happen in other health districts is actually some sort of pre-registration form, and then right before the meeting, I saw that actually the governor announced that there was one of those now that's released for everybody. So you fill out the survey essentially, the survey kind of categorizes you based on your age and your occupation, or what sort of health conditions you may have, and I guess it captures your phone number and email address. So I want to make sure that we push that out too, because I think there's people in those later phases that probably want to get preregistered now, so we avoid the issue of having everyone call like we're having to deal with this morning. So that would be good to push out. I know that's, again, late-breaking, it just came out tonight.
That's right, and I just want to know, we have gotten that form, and we've been given that link, and that will be a digital process for our seniors to go through directly with the Health Department, so we will be promoting that link.
Great. My understanding is it's for everyone beyond the 75-up 1B, so if you're in kind of one of the later phases, it looks like it captures your email, and then you'll get notified when those phases open, so hopefully it can be going to the general public, too. And then third is, it'd be great to get updates on, for our population, what is the status or progress of vaccinations? I know so far it's really just been our healthcare providers, but I think it'd be reassuring to our public to know that, you know, we are making progress for our population. Can the Fairfax Health District break out the city's population differently?
So the city's vaccination numbers are available on the state Virginia Department of Health dashboard. It is, so those numbers are available, and they are broken out by our jurisdiction.
Great. I think that's it, thank you. This is good news.
And Ms. Hardy, we did, Susan and I and Wyatt, we have spoken about, you know, the different ways this weekend to push out information to the elderly, whether it be flyers or some other, you know, things that you spoke about. So we are in the process of discussing that and developing a plan to get that out very shortly.
Great. I think the good news is we're small and nimble enough, and we know our residents well, so hopefully we can, you know, rely on neighborhoods to help get the word out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Thanks very much. So let me just say, as a result of being in the Moderna vaccine trial, I got the first shot, and I can tell you I had absolutely no reaction, so I would urge everyone to move forward with vaccination opportunities available to them. Point number two, it seems to me that the volume of folks in 1B and certainly in 1C will probably overwhelm the Public Health Department. How soon will the vaccinations be available at our local pharmacies, at Harris Teeter, CVS, et cetera? Because it seems to me only when they're available through the normal processes, for example, where you get a flu shot, are we really going to be able to get this vaccine out very widely, or as widely as we want. So let me ask, what do we know about how soon we're going to move beyond simply government administration to the much broader private sector for 75 and above and other than non-governmental employees? Because it seems to me only when we move in that direction are we going to be able to get the kind of mass vaccinations that we really need.
Yeah, we've actually, we actually spoke, or actually spoke to Colin today, and, you know, there's a lot of unknown, as we all know, moving forward, especially with a new administration coming in on January 20th. So that really couldn't be answered as far as when we're going to be able to really ramp up the vaccination process. We were told that Phase 1B will at least last a month, if not two months, before we can actually move into 1C. I do know that CVS and others have already assisted in Phase 1A with that process, but we're really limited in what they can do or what we can do right now based off the number of vaccinations that we have available. So a lot will depend on moving forward, how many we can distribute, and how fast they can get it out to those individuals who can then assist them.
If, Mr. Mayor, just one follow-up.
Yeah, of course.
We could pursue this issue, and I know that we are through various channels, but to the extent that we can, at least in my view, until we have many, many outlets for this vaccination, we're really going to be, any one single outlet is going to be difficult to really get the kind of mass vaccinations we're talking about with folks over age 75, and certainly the broader population. Thanks much.
Sure, and just to follow up just a bit, I did have a call through Northern Virginia Regional Commission with the person who's leading the vaccination efforts and the health directors of the Northern Virginia Health Districts, and to your specific question, to my understanding, they are using, I don't know whether it's CVS per se, but they are using outside groups that are federally approved for some aspects of the vaccination process. I believe in the nursing homes at CVS or some other provider are actually providing those. So they're already working with them, but to your point about, you know, walking into a CVS or a Giant and getting a vaccine, I don't have an answer when that might be. I would presume with the Pfizer vaccine, they're probably never going to be able to do that, given the deep freeze that's required, but Moderna may be different, but I don't have that answer, but that's one to put on the list for next call.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there any other questions or comments about this particular aspect, or should we go ahead and cut Wyatt free to continue on with this manager's report? Wyatt?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Planning ahead, as was referenced earlier in the meeting about the riot and the attack on the Capitol last week, you know, that's something that all, our entire workforce watched with dismay last week, and we are all resolved as government officials to do everything we can to be a beacon of light for the country, for our citizens, and to make democracy work, and with all of our effort and with all of our dedication. And in terms of specific things that our public safety officials, our chief of police and sheriff are involved in, they are involved in the regional calls and the after-action of that riot last week, and they're also involved in the efforts to plan as a region for a safe inaugural on January 20th. And so I want to thank our public safety team for their contributions to that, and the city will be taking care of the city, but also trying to help in those regional efforts. It's crucially important. The last thing I want to report on tonight is our library, and coming up at an upcoming council member, I'd like to be able to take the opportunity just to show a fuller report of the library, but I am pleased to report through the, I think, very effective management of Lionel Millard that this project is remaining on time and on budget. And the LCOC has, the Library Construction Oversight Committee has been performing its role and just getting the regular updates on this project, asking, I think, very good questions and trenchant observations for our team as we continue to move that project forward. I think you can see out there right now that the roof is on, it is watertight now, the windows will be going in soon, and so that's an important milestone, and the interior finishes are now being focused on. So the basic report is that I think that project is going well, and I'd like to give a fuller report at an upcoming council meeting, after the next LCOC meeting, just to share that information with council, perhaps with the project manager, so that the council has that most up-to-date information. That's all I have to report tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So before we move to questions, let me just ask him, Mr. Shields, did you have any new information for us or the public regarding the Washington Park and Broad project?
So, Mayor, I would ask that if I could provide a written report to city council just on progress that we're making, particularly with the kind of the top issues, the Lawton neighborhood concerns, the immediate adjacent business concerns, the grocery guarantee, and I think probably most, the most complex issue is the affordable housing piece, and those discussions are ongoing, but I think it would be most effective if I could provide a written report on that this week, and then an update at your work session next week with, again, the goal for final consideration by the city council at your meeting on the 25th.
All right. So are there other questions or comments from Mr. Shields? Mr. Littenhouse?
Yeah, Wyatt, at work session next week, or sometime between now and then, can we get an update on neighborhood traffic? Call me.
Yes, that is on the schedule for your work session next week.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, any other comments or questions from Mr. Shields? If not, let's move on to business on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
We have two items on second reading tonight. The first one is TO 20-21, Ordinance to amend Chapter 8, Article 6 of the Schools and Home Childcare Facilities, oh, excuse me, I missed that. Ordinance to amend Chapter 8, Article 6 of the Code of the City of Falls Church, Private Schools, Special Schools and Home Childcare Facilities to require consent for background checks.
All right, and Mr. Shields, who's going to handle this from staff?
Mr. Ripple Patel will be handling this item for staff. All right, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Good evening, everyone. I am here for the second reading to amend Chapter 8, Article 6 of the City Code governing private schools and daycare to bring its standards in line with revised Fairfax County Code requirements. The amendment will add requirements for additional out-of-state criminal background checks and sex offender registry searches for any adult who has lived in another state in preceding five years. The city contracts with the Fairfax County Office for Children to cost-effectively regulate family daycare homes in the city. At this time, this ordinance will affect three home daycare providers in the city. The Fairfax County Board of Supervisors adopted these code changes on October 28, 2020. I would also like to inform, we have not received any public comments for this amendment. And that is all I have for this reading. If you have any questions, I'm still here for that.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Patel. Are there any questions or comments? All right, any public comment, Madam Clerk? Anyone signed up to speak?
We had nobody sign up to speak, and I haven't received anything via email.
Okay, does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Snyder, do you have a question, or would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance.
All right. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
And who's that on the second?
I think it was Debbie. Debbie can have it.
All right, Ms. Hisscott on the second. Any final comments? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shontz Hisscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, will you call the next item, please?
Yes. The next item is also on second reading, TO 20-23, Ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify Falls Church City Code Chapter 38 subdivisions to provide standards for vertical subdivisions of property.
All right, Mr. Shields, who's handling this?
Mayor Tarter, Ms. Aubrey will be handling this item.
All right.
Good evening, council. Council has requested to amend the subdivision ordinance to add provisions for vertical subdivisions of airspace, and this item is before council for public hearing and final consideration. For some brief history, the Falls Church Gateway Partners, the developer of the West Falls Church site, has requested the ability to create vertical subdivisions as part of their development at the west end, and the effect of this ordinance is to allow a developer to create a legal ownership structure that is similar to a condominium. However, the par-. However, the parcels or lots would not share common areas with each other, and this would permit, for example, a mixed-use building with ground floor retail and an apartment building above to consist of two legal parcels, one for the ground floor retail and a separate parcel for the apartment building, and those two parcels could have entirely separate ownership. The Planning Commission, at their recommendation hearing, proposed two amendments to the draft ordinance. The first was a technical change to the definition of lot, and the second was a clarification that vertical subdivisions be limited to projects in B1, B2, B3, and M1 zoning districts. And those incorporation, those changes have incorporated into the draft ordinance. At City Council's work session last week, a discussion was held on a couple items. One was the potential unintended consequences of allowing these type of subdivisions citywide versus limiting it to the recommended districts, and then the potential of existing large single-family homes being converted into multi-unit buildings through this mechanism. In terms of the first question or concern, these types of subdivisions are commonly used for mixed-use buildings, and in the city, those have primarily been allowed in the B districts through special exceptions, and it's anticipated that that is what would happen in the future for these subdivisions. So we are, I think, with limiting it to the B districts and N districts, that would kind of alleviate any concerns about it happening in citywide. And at the direction of Council, staff has incorporated an additional limitation to restrict them to special exception projects within those zoning districts. So that proposed language has been added to Section 38-3 if Council wishes to include that. In terms of the other concern about potential for large single-family homes being converted into multi-unit buildings, again, limiting it to those districts that were listed would prevent that. There are a few existing single-family homes within B districts, however, due to their age and size and the building code requirements that would be triggered through a vertical subdivision, it's unlikely that those properties would benefit from such an action. So at that, I think that's it. So if there's any questions for staff, I can take them.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Aubrey or Ms. McCroskey? Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think she's covered it. And we have made those additions into the, or Ms. Aubrey has made those changes to the ordinance that had been recommended by the Planning Commission, and so it is ready to go.
And not just the Planning Commission from our work session before as well?
Yes, correct.
And you've, and you've reviewed those changes as an attorney?
Yes. It would only, currently, it would only apply to properties in the B districts, the M1 district, and properties where it's been approved through a special exception.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions or comments for staff or just in general? Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public who wish to speak today?
No, sir. I didn't receive any signups for this or nor emails.
So we have no public comment either?
No.
All right. Looks like we have one hand raised here. I'm going to find out who that is. It looks like maybe it's gone down. Okay. If there's no questions or comments for staff, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO 2-23.
And that will be as changed with the recent changes staff's made, including those changes?
I think the document includes those changes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lichtenhouse on the second. Any further comment? Madam Clerk, do you want to go ahead with the vote?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Council.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Yes, we have TO 20-24, Ordinance to amend Article 4, Division 10, B2 Central Business District, Section 48-488, Special Exceptions, to add provisions for consideration of uses not otherwise permitted by right for development projects on sites designated as Special Revitalization District for Education and Economic Development and designated for mixed use on the future land use map.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Shields, who's handling this?
And Ms. Aubrey will take this item as well.
Thank you. Council has requested to amend the City Code to add provisions in the B2 Central Business Zoning District to allow for consideration of uses not otherwise permitted by right as part of a special exception entitlement applications for developments within the Special Revitalization District for Education and Economic Development and designated for mixed use on the future land use map. In context of the proposed SCE or Special Exception Entitlement for the West Falls Church project, example of uses could include daycare, bowling, pet services, and radio stations. This item is before City Council for public hearing and final consideration. The Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval with no changes. And just to kind of shortly summarize, this does allow for Council to consider other uses that are not listed by right within the B2, but this would be done as part of a special exception entitlement. So once that SCE is approved, it would include those uses specifically permitted as part of that SCE. So that is the conclusion, so I can answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this issue?
There is not.
Any public comment received?
No, sir.
Unless there's any comment or question from Council, I would just ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TR 20-53.
All right. That's Mr. Duncan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hardy on the second. Unless there's any final comments, let's go ahead and move to the vote. Madam Clerk?
A point of order, I believe. I think Mr. Duncan may have misspoke. I think he said TR 20-53, and we're considering TO 20-24.
Oh, sorry. I called up the wrong.
Just want to make sure we're on the right, on the same page.
Can I make that motion again?
It's what happens when I don't have paper to work from. I am looking for TO 20-24. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
I moved it up, TO 20-24.
All right. And do we have a second for that?
Second, that corrected motion.
All right. Ms. Hardy on the second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
All right. And now we're on to resolutions and first readings, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Before we move on to this first item, I just want to give staff a few minutes to get organized, and so I'm going to go ahead and, and call a brief recess. And so if we could, let's recess until 8:20. We'll reconvene at 8:20 and move on with Item B1 on our agenda and go from there. So again, just a brief recess, and we will reconvene at 8:20.
Thank you, Mayor.
And on FCC TV side, we're live. Celeste, are you showing on live stream?
We should be shortly. Just a little delay.
Yep.
Or someone going to take roll?
And on FCC TV side, we're live. Celeste, are you showing on live?
We're ready to go. Thank you. Just want to make sure that everybody arrived back from the Council. So I'm going to call roll. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Here.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Well, welcome back to everyone. I'm sorry the delay took a bit longer. The recess took a bit longer than originally anticipated, but we're back and ready to go, and I would ask the, the clerk to read the next item, please.
Yes, we have TR 20-53, Resolution to approve the First Amendment to Comprehensive Agreement authorized in Resolution 2019-15 with FCGP Development LLC for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment.
All right. Mr. Shields, are you handling this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Tarter. If I could go through a couple of slides that I think help sort of tell the story of this comprehensive amendment, comprehensive agreement amendment, and, and then after that, Carol McCoskeri will just walk us through the resolution itself, and I think she's going to have a proposed language tweak to that resolution that she will lay out for the Council's consideration. After a lot of work and, and a lot of, you know, basically kind of exploring all options with the development team, with the city's legal team, and the city's outside commercial real estate advisor, Mr. Risher, who's on this call, we are recommending that the Council approve the resolution that would authorize the city manager to execute the amendments to the comprehensive agreement as we present it tonight. And the, as, as the, the Council is aware, we've been working very hard on this with the development team, really right up until the beginning of this meeting, just to resolve any last issues and to make sure that we are on the same page on any lingering lack of clarity or disagreements that we had with this amendment. Ms. Bederell from Hoffman Associates is on the call tonight, and she's here, and she can answer any questions from the City Council as well. So let me back up just a little bit, and, and we've had now two town hall meetings on this and two City Council meetings discussing this, this proposed amendment to the comprehensive agreement. And the amendment arises out of needs by the developer and, and trying to finance the project in an environment where financing for commercial real estate for the hospitality sector, the retail sector, office sector is particularly difficult. And so after, after really working this through, we gave a presentation to the, to the City Council on December 14th, which was our first public discussion of these changes. The City Council had discussed them in weeks prior in closed session, given the nature of a negotiation of a real estate. We then had two town hall meetings, as I mentioned, and tonight we have a public hearing and request for final consideration. Cindy, next slide. And Council is aware of this background. We've used this slide just for those who maybe have not tracked this project quite as close as others, so I'll, I'll not go through this slide, but it's there for the public's benefit. Cindy, next slide. And again, the Council is very well familiar with the 10-acre site, so I won't go through this slide as well, but in our town hall meetings, we just laid out the office, hotel, condominium, senior housing, and multifamily components to this project, which remain unchanged and have been upheld by the development team and by the city with these amendments. Next slide, Cindy. So as I just mentioned, you know, some of the things that have not changed with this amendment is, is the program with the ratios that were laid out in the site plan that the City Council reviewed just prior to COVID, when things really started to shut down. That remains as the Council has seen it, with, with those ratios that were discussed at that time for the hotel, office, civic space, senior housing, condos, and apartments. Also importantly, Falls Church Gateway Partner will carry out the demolition of the high school by May 29th for the trapezoid area that Gilbane needs. The remainder of the demolition will occur apace, and there's a date certain for the completion for that. So what we'll discuss is just the changes that are part of this agreement. There is a delay of approximately six months in terms of the final delivery of, of the program. There's a reduction in the capitalized ground lease payments, and we'll go through those in detail. There is an offsetting increase in the ground rent payments over the 99-year term, and that was really kind of a key feature of the negotiation to try to make back what we're giving up in the near term with benefits over the longer term for the lease. And there are also some revisions to the profit share provisions, and there, there's a, a new one as well. So, next slide, Cindy. So the, the big change and the most painful change in this amendment is the reduction of the $7 million payments, which are reduced to 4.5 million. And so that's a reduction in the value of those capitalized lease payments from a total of 34.5 million down to 25.5 million, and that's for Phase 1 of the project. We don't have changes to Phase 2, and I'll, I'll go through what those numbers are in just a moment. The increases in ground rent payments, however, are as follows. One, they start earlier, so the $200,000 per year payment starts in 2025 versus 2029. Those then continue on for the 99-year term of the lease, and they'll also now escalate at 2.75% instead of 2%, which was the number in the original comprehensive agreement. There'll also be a plus-up of 25K in the year 2031. So that does have an increase in nominal value for the city over the term of the lease of $45.7 million. However, if you do a present value calculation using a, a discount rate of 3.5%, there is net, all these changes, is a decrease in value to the city of $3.2 million. There is a nominal value then increased after you deduct out the decreases in capitalized lease payments, a nominal value increase of $35.8 million. Next slide, Cindy. So looked at it in terms of a chart, the, the first payment has already been made and received, and it's in the city's coffers, and that's the $6.5 million payment, we're using that right now to help cover the debt on the new high school. The, the comprehensive agreement laid out $7 million payments over the next four million, over the next four years. Those have been reduced to $4.5 million payments, and I should note, they'll also be broken into two pieces. One will be in December, and one will be in June of each year of $2.25 million each, but for each fiscal year, a $4.5 million payment. In 2025, the last payment will occur, plus condo participation, and I'll describe that in just a moment. In 2026, there's a payment of $1 million, which is the last capitalized ground lease payment, and then the ground rent kicks in in 2026 and will escalate at a rate of 2.75%. So you see those ground rents then increasing in the out years, and then in 2031, you have the $25,000 plus-up that gets added to that in that year. Next slide, Cindy. The profit share provisions, there's a 30% city participation in the profit for the condo sales. So the developer is in their pro forma, is anticipating $750 per net square feet of average, and so the city will capture 30% of any value of those sales that's above $750 per net square foot. If, if they came, came in at $800 per net square foot, just as an example, that would result in a $2.25 million benefit to the city. There's a land lift provision in the, in the comprehensive agreement. They said that the city gets one quarter of the land lift at construction loan closing. And what that is, is the appraised value of the land, once all the entitlements are set, all the financing is... And what that is, is the appraised value of the land. Once all the entitlements are set, all the financing is in place, at that time of that appraisal, just before construction starts, the city will now receive 50% of that land lift value. There was a capital administrative fee of 50 basis points on the leasehold every time it's sold or was refinanced. That is out of the agreement now. We have kept, however, a 25 basis point capital administrative fee on the condo sales after the initial sellout by the developer. So those are the profit share provisions. Next slide. The high school demolition, Foster's Gateway Partner will complete that by May 29th and then proceed with the remainder of the demolition and completed by the fall of 2021. The Washington Gas Regulator Station, this is now a city financial obligation. It was formerly the developer's obligation. The cost for that is $2 million. We are still working with Washington Gas, and we have not resolved the issue of the franchise agreement, which the city asserts calls for the Washington Gas to be responsible for that cost under the city's franchise agreement. We're still working that issue. The pilot, which is a tax abatement program during the construction period, and then with a schedule of predictable tax payments up until stabilization, that remains unchanged. The closing date, and this has been a big feature of the discussions over the last two weeks and which we came to a conclusion on, which I'm recommending to the city council tonight. So the city will be guaranteed a payment in December 31st, by December 31st of 2021. The outside closing date would be pushed, however, to a potential of April 30th of 2022. So let me go into this in just a little bit more detail on the next slide, Cindy. So what the issue here was that because of the delays that have occurred with the pandemic and sort of the ability to get the component pieces of this development on track, the developer has a target of closing on the ground lease on December 31st, 2021. Now, closing on that ground lease is a very important date for the city. That closing is when we basically hand over control of the acreage to the development team. Before that happens, however, the developer needs to get all their financing in place, and with that financing comes the completion guarantees and the other guarantees that make it clear to the city that we're getting the development with the economic vibrancy and the mix of uses that we signed up for. And so all those things have to be in place before closing. Well, that's a tremendous amount of things that need to come together over the next, basically 12, 11 and a half months. So the developer has expressed concern about being able to hit that date. So they've asked for an extension. They keep the target closing date of December 31st, 2021. But they have the ability to extend that to, for four months, to April 30th. However, if they exercise that right, they need to make a payment. You know, they would owe the city $2.25 million in December. They would make a payment of 80% of that amount, and that would essentially buy them an extension to April 30th, at which time they make the remainder payment of that 2.25 million. And then in June, the second $2.25 million payment is made per schedule. So in the event that they have to exercise that request for an extension of four months, and that's the most that they can ask for, the payment in FY '22 will be 4.5 million, as shown on all the previous charts. So this has been an issue that we, you know, we've worked over for several weeks with the city, you know, frankly, seeking the maximum payment upfront in December. And we've reached this, basically this 80% payment in December compromise. Next slide, Cindy. This is a chart that just lays out how the city covers its debt service over the coming years, and the city council has looked at this in our prior presentations. We will run a deficit in FY '21. We'll have a significant drawdown on reserves. That $6.4 million does include, you know, all of the planned use of capital reserves plus the $2 million for the Washington Gas Regulator Station. And then in FY '22, we have another drawdown of about $500,000 in capital reserves. But then in 2023, our debt service will be basically at or slightly below those $4.5 million payments, and we'll be able to grow our capital reserves again up until about that 2027 period. We have fairly conservatively, I think, anticipated the property tax yield on the site. And so, you know, that's how the capital reserves would work from then on. After the Phase 2 payment, which is scheduled in 2029, that's the outside date for that, then the capital reserves are back to a very healthy level. Next slide, Cindy. The Community Development Authority, and we've had a number of meetings on this just this week with the city's financial advisor, as well as the legal team that we have, that Carol has hired to help us with this CDA. And the basic understanding with this amendment is that the city will proceed with creating the CDA. The city will not back the bonds issued by the CDA. Those will stand on their own two feet and be paid for out of the assessed value of the 10-acre site alone without the backstop of the city. And the developer will not pay $2.5 million to the city for creating the CDA. That $2.5 million was premised earlier on the city providing its subject-to-appropriation or moral backing for those bonds, which would result in a lower interest rate on that financing. One of the things that I think was clarified in our meetings, you know, since we've been digging deeper into the CDA, is that under Virginia law, unless expressly agreed to by the city council that you are extending your subject-to-appropriation or moral backing for the bonds, under Virginia law, it's actually against the law for the city to provide a payment for debt service for a CDA. And so there'll be more detail on that when we bring that forward to the city council. But I think as we've looked more closely into it, we do feel very strongly that there's a solid break really between the city's financial obligations and what the Community Development Authority's obligations would be under standard Virginia law. And I think the investors or investor in those bonds will understand that very clearly. Next slide. So again, the CAA amendment is subject to some conditions, and one of those is the completion of the demolition of the high school, particularly that trapezoid area by May 29th. That's a condition of it, of the amendment. And then the, because, and that's really important to keep Gilbane on that critical path. And then there's just a basic obligation of the developer then to complete the demolition by a date certain that fall. In addition, Foster's Gateway Partner is committed to the transactional agreements with the component pieces that really have been brought to us as one of the main reasons why we should consider these amendments in terms of keeping those transactional agreements on schedule. And so that's one of the performance measures in this amendment as well. So with that, I think that's the end of the slides. We'll next just go through the resolution. But maybe before we do that, if we could pause here just to see if there are any questions about those terms or discussion on those terms.
All right. Are there questions or comments from council on what we've just heard? First off, thank you Wyatt and Carol. I know you all have both worked extremely hard these past weeks, if not months, on this. So I want to let you know how much we all appreciate that. But are there, are there questions for Mr. Shields? Ross? Mr. Littenhouse?
Yeah, thanks, Dave. Wyatt or Ted, the profit share provisions weren't included in those calculations. Do you guys have an idea of what those would be conservatively?
Let me defer to Ted on that.
Councilmember, we actually did include an estimate for the condo participation in those calculations. We did not include any net revenue from the land lift profit participation. You know, the profit participation associated with the appraisal, associated with the construction loan obtained by the developer, you know, is really speculative at this point. What we did make sure we did was adjust our land basis down to reflect our lower price. And so we believe there's a higher chance of performance on that. We also believe that this project, in a way that's being envisioned by the developer and the city, is going to produce significant value. And we certainly think that that is a material benefit to the city, but we haven't estimated it nor included it in any of the analyses.
Okay. Can you guys show me the list?
I just want to just make, yeah, and that $3.2 million present value decrease, that does not include any of the profit share provisions. We did do, as Ted mentioned, we did do a calculation of, you know, what would $800 per net square feet yield for the city? And that's that, you know, that $2.25 million figure on the next slide. So that estimate was done. Yeah.
Okay. Do we know, do we know, Ted, what that potential land lift value or what that participation would look like?
Well, hopefully it's 50% of a very nice adjusted figure. I cannot now say with any accuracy what it will be. What I do know is that our participation will start $9 million earlier because of the adjusted basis. We suspect that it is a material benefit to the city, and we're anxious to get to that point at, you know, at which we feel the land will be valued more in line with what our original thinking was. And that was the reason for paying this concession from the developer.
Okay. And so just to be clear on the calculations, the current present value number does not include these profit share provisions?
It includes an estimate of the performance of the condominiums, which were underwritten at outsales of an average of $800 per square foot, and Robin and Evan are free to, free to correct me if I'm wrong.
So that, okay.
Yep.
So that, the $3 million decrease in present value that was shown in that slide, this is just to clarify for folks that may be watching.
Yep.
That includes that participation in the net condo sales, but it does not include the land lift, and it does not include the capital administration fee on the condos?
Correct.
Okay. So do we have an estimate, even if it's ballpark, for what those two other profit share provisions would yield to the city potentially?
You know what, councilmember? I could come up with something on the fly, but I'd much rather respond to you more formally so that I can discuss that with the city manager.
Okay. Yeah, just, I think it's good to have that on the record at some point, just so we have an idea of what the total deal changes are yielding to the city. And I know that we've spoken about this in the past, Ted, in terms of how we arrived at nominal versus present value. And a number of folks don't, you know, don't live in the finance world. And so I think it's important for folks to know all of the assumptions that have gone into this so they can see the complete deal. Because a small change in that discount rate can change that present value number. It doesn't change the nominal. And that present value number could also, it could also inch back up to something closer to a net wash when you include some of those other provisions. So I'd just be curious to know what that is. But I would echo the mayor's statements to thank you guys for the long hours that have been put trying to get this back to something that is somewhat palatable, especially considering the current environment. So thank you guys for that.
All right. Thanks. And I tell you, I omitted you, Ted. I actually didn't recall that you were on the line, but thank you as well. Our next questions will come from Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wyatt, you mentioned that the tax revenue projections in the out years are fairly conservative. So while we're taking a haircut in the near term, the payments somewhat less than we'd hoped for, is it still accurate to say that, you know, the scope of the project, its component parts, we're still talking about a project of somewhere between $400 and $500 million worth of investment, which will yield tax revenues, you know, far into the future that will be sufficient to sustain our plan of finance for the high school and any other reasonably expected needs related to the high school?
Wyatt, I think you're muted on.
Thank you. So when I speak of conservative, I'm pointing really to that $4 million per year net fiscal impact. That is in 2029. That is below what Becky Witzman, using her fiscal impact analysis, is projecting for the site. And it's also below what the developer is projecting for the site. And so Kiran Bawa, when she does her debt service coverage projection, she tends to be more conservative than Becky and certainly more conservative than the developer. But, you know, I think at that point, $4 million per year is what we need to cover our debt service. And I think that based on the mix of uses, I think that's a very solid projection.
Also add to this, sorry. Also add to what the city manager is saying, we did an analysis of the cost of delay. And even one year's worth of delay, assuming the old deal was in place but simply was executed a year later, essentially erased all the benefits of having that old deal because it's a year longer in delaying getting to that full, fully loaded tax revenue figure. And so essentially, because those payments are near enough in the future and are needed not only for the city's obligations related to the debt service associated with the school, but also other commitments, that, you know, every year delay produced approximately $4 to $5 million in adjusted discounted loss to the city. So it helped reinforce our sense of urgency in trying to get to the middle ground.
All right. Mr. Duncan, if you have further questions at this point?
No, thank you.
Ms. Shantescott?
Yes, I just have a few questions. And again, just want to reiterate that based upon that schedule that we're continuing to provide for the, you know, the high school just opening this week, we're obviously focused on that. And first and foremost, this development is to be paying for that. It looks like it covers that well. I just want to state that super straightforwardly. So not a question. My, one of my other questions is that you said you used a 3.5%. I think that's also pretty conservative considering what we're currently paying. Can you just confirm that, Ted?
Yes, we use the 3.5% discount rate in the financial analysis. And obviously, if you, if you decrease that, it narrows the gap or even makes the, you know, the deal outlaid in the amendment more valuable to the city, depending on which discount rate you choose.
Yeah, that seems to me a particularly conservative discount rate. I just want to clarify that. And then lastly, just a matter of process, Wyatt, you said the CDA, that when the council sees the details of the CDA, and this is just probably because I'm a rookie, when is that? Like, we're voting on the overall agreement, and then we see the language later? Can you just clarify that for me, please?
We will, if the council approves this tonight, then we will begin working to bring this to council. Basically, the, a plan of action and sort of the legal structure for creating and standing up a CDA, you know, as quickly as we can schedule it. Typically, you know, it will take a matter of months to get this stood up. Um, typically, um, you know, it, it will take a matter of months to get this stood up. And also the issuance of the bonds for a CDA, uh, our financial advisor does, you know, tells us that takes a matter of months as well. And so we would shift our focus, uh, to that immediately if the council approves these amendments tonight.
Thank you for that clarification. That's it for me right now.
All right, Ms. Connolly?
Wyatt, can you go back to the slide that has the, uh, the out years of the, um, impact on our fiscal situation?
Yes, and Cindy's on, has control, but there it is with the green.
There is, oh, there it is, there is. Uh, so two questions on this one. As we look at the ending balance in FY '21 and FY '22 that are lower than we want them to be, how does this impact our overall fiscal policy? We've taken great pains to adjust that fiscal policy for this project. And I just want to make sure that this continues to keep us within those limits that we've set for ourselves.
It does. Uh, you know, there's, uh, you know, 2022 has always been sort of the tough year, um, uh, for us in, in this financial planning. Uh, but we will be within policy that year as well.
Okay. And that policy includes the unassigned fund balance as well as the capital reserves, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay. So we do have to keep an eye on our unassigned fund balance going forward to make sure that we're okay through '21 and '22.
That's right.
Okay. Um, the Washington Gas question, you mentioned that either we would pay for it or Washington Gas would pay for it. How will that be decided and when will that be decided? I see you included it in the '21 amount.
Yeah, don't, uh, well, so, uh, you know, we, we have a history with Washington Gas where we've had, uh, infrastructure, um, that the city has needed moved for whatever reason. And we've been, uh, very consistent in the application of that franchise agreement in that case. And Washington Gas has agreed in the past, um, that, uh, that, that they are liable for those costs. And this is more expensive, there's no question. So I'm sure it's going to be scrutinized, but we think the principle remains. There is one slight issue, and that is that it's on school grounds. And, um, and so whenever we've done this in the past, it's a, uh, it, it's a infrastructure that's in the public right of way. Uh, however, the franchise agreement does note within city streets or grounds. And so I'm not trying to litigate that in this meeting, but I think the city's made a responsible, um, uh, re- and, you know, um, approach on this issue. And, and we expect it to be resolved, uh, this month.
Okay. And you will keep us posted on that, of course.
That's right.
All right. And then my, uh, one of my big concerns about the changes to this is just ensuring that the school demolition occurs on time. And I'm just wondering, are there any milestones built in there to ensure that we can see that, you know, the school will be turned over in January? And what are the milestones that we have to know that it's going to be completed by May 29th?
Well, we have a detailed Gantt chart, um, you know, from the, from the Hoffman, uh, engineering team. And so we'll know, I think, real quickly if we have scheduling issues. And, um, embedded in the comprehensive agreement itself, however, is just, you know, that one date of, uh, you know, by which it needs to be done. And that's a big sanction. Um, obviously, the entire comprehensive agreement is conditioned upon them meeting that, uh, that condition. So, um, you know, I think that's very strong protection for the city.
Okay. And, and the schools have been involved in this conversation. This is part of your weekly infrastructure meetings?
Yeah, we meet every other week. And, um, and so we reviewed it just last Wednesday.
Okay.
Uh, for the second time, that's right.
Okay. And, and everyone's on board with how this is going to work. And that's good to know. Uh, and then my last thing I just want to say is that I don't want to have to do this again. This is, um, we, we signed a comprehensive agreement, oh, 18 months ago, and everyone was very pleased and we celebrated it. And there have been presentations and, uh, articles written throughout the region about what an amazing project this is. And it still can be, but I'm really tired of having to relitigate it over and over and over again. So I really, this should be the last time we do this. And I just want to make that, uh, firm in my mind that we cannot keep doing this every six months, come up with another, uh, another amendment to the comprehensive agreement. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Thank you. Um, I had a similar question, it was what Mary Beth asked around, um, our fiscal policies. I think I asked that last week and you had confirmed that we are meeting policies. Um, to clarify though, with us splitting, um, the December closing payment, the 80/20, so 80% of it coming in December, and then 20% coming in April, should the developer not fully close in December, does that still meet our policy?
I- i- uh, in terms of getting those payments?
Yes, in terms of kind of how much we'll have in reserves then.
Well, y- you know, from a, from a cash flow perspective, that December payment was important to us. From a financial reporting perspective, it's the year end where we make that measurement as our, our, um, available fund balance relative to expenditures, where we report out to our bondholders and to, um, those who are watching the city's finances, uh, whether we're in compliance or not. So year end is when we need to have that for, for reporting purposes.
And where this matters, especially for this year, knowing that our operating budgets are going to be tough, is I don't think any of us want to be in a position where we'll be forced to add money to reserves when operating budgets are going to be tight in order to meet policy. So I think we need to go in making sure that's not the case. Um, second, Wyatt, I appreciate, um, the efforts of staff to hold, um, several town halls before we have to, uh, vote on this. Could you summarize what the public sentiment and questions have been, just so we have a good sense of where the concerns in the community might be?
Um, yeah, that's a, a great question. Um, you know, in the first town hall meeting, I think that, um, you know, they were, um, you know, I, I think, uh, um, let me, let me sort of go through my catalog of, of some of the main issues. Uh, you know, certainly the, uh, maintaining that, you know, this, the city's, uh, ability to cover the debt service, that I think that was a very frequent comment. That was the compact, uh, from the beginning on this project. Um, having the, uh, the demolition of the high school done, I think that was a, a recurring comment. I think there are, uh, some questions, um, you know, making sure that that demolition, you know, understanding exactly how that is done. There were questions about it being done from a, a lead perspective and recycling the materials. We did answer that question, um, during the town hall meeting last week. There were also questions about, during the demolition, about how students will walk, um, you know, safely to the high school while this activity is going on. That's been a major point of discussion in the infrastructure planning meeting. And it's not just during the demolition, it will be during the construction period as well. And so we've identified pathways which may need to change from time to time, uh, based on what construction activity is happening. Uh, but that, I think that was a, um, a question that was asked on several occasions. I think that, um, I think that the, kind of the most resonant ones, though, are the concern, uh, that the city is, is getting value for the property and that the city is meeting its financial obligations, given the amount of leverage that the city has right now, or debt that the city has right now for, uh, for the high school principally, but also the library and the city hall project.
Got it. Um, and so to put it succinctly, we are meeting obligations. It does cover debt service, this keeps the demolition of the high school on track. Because I think while we're very deep into the details of present value and discount rates and all the mechanics of this financiality, which obviously is very complex, I think what I want to make sure the citizens re-understand is that we're preserving as much value as we can and we're doing what we set out to do. And I think the program mix of uses, which we've talked about really importantly, because it delivers the fiscals, um, in those out years is important. Um, I did actually want to ask the developer to address a public comment we received, which is really around the amount of retail. Um, I think as we see the retail landscape change even pre-COVID, um, you all have been pretty bullish on making sure that we keep the retail, because we believe that the types of retail programmed in the site are important to kind of create that vibrant place. Um, so I was hoping you could actually speak to that, because that is a pretty common sentiment I receive, is why do we add so much retail? You know, we have retail that's vacant already. So what is it about this space that you guys believe is important? And why are we keeping it the way it is? I thought I saw Mr. Goldman and Miss Betterell on the call. Or Wyatt, if you want to take it too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I am here, I, 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 can you guys hear me right now?
We can.
Yes, we can. Okay, great. Sorry.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I figured you probably.
No, 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 not at all, not at all. I've been, I've been, um, focused on this the entire time. I just assumed Robin would jump in, because she's, that's kind of her world, the retail side. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's a great question. Uh, the retail market is certainly changing. Um, but at the same time, there really is a, kind of a minimum amount of retail that you want to have to create a sense of place and to, and to drive that sense of place. You want to have enough restaurants that, um, somebody can show up on a Saturday night and know that they're going to get in somewhere, um, and not, you know, not end up having to, uh, leave and go somewhere else. And, uh, and so with the grocery component at 40,000 square feet, um, you, you want to be in the 60,000 to 80,000 square feet of small shops range in order to create a sense of place and a good mix of retail that satisfies the daily needs for the office workers upstairs in the buildings, as well as the hotel guests, as well as the residents. Um, and that's throughout, you know, all the products I've worked on in mixed-use perspective. That's kind of a rule of thumb. Um, I think there's, uh, what I'd say about the retail world, the retail world has generally been successful at reinventing itself time and time again. If you, you know, counted the number of times that, um, the entire world declared the retail sector dead, um, you would just be counting and counting while beyond your fingers and toes. Um, the, it, it, retail will not look like it looks today, certainly in the future, but there are, it's one of the most entrepreneurial and creative sectors of any industry. Um, and so there will be reinvention, there will be different types of places, different types of retail services. Um, and then, of course, our goal here had always been to be experiential retail, so something that you have to be there in person to experience, whether it's restaurants or, um, um, restaurants or cafes or coffee shops or the music, music school we're doing. Um, and so that type of retail, um, is something that should survive once we get past this pandemic. So it's, it's a valid point and a valid concern. Um, and that's, I think, also why we're being careful not to take a ton of retail up through the Womata and the Virginia Tech parcels, um, because there is a point, if you get to 200,000 or 300,000 square feet of retail, where, um, you know, the market probably can't support it at all.
Great. Thank you, I appreciate that, gives us a little bit of hope.
You're welcome. Sorry for talking from my kitchen, I got kicked out of my office by my kids, so.
And, and, and Mayor, uh, I know we've got probably more council comments. There is one, while we're, while we're discussing the closing dates, I do want to also just highlight, uh, one other big area of discussion over the past couple of weeks, and that is the senior component. And if you, um, if you'll recall, the se- the senior component is, is composed of both independent living and, uh, some higher level of care assisted living. Um, and there's a 60/40 ratio for that, uh, for those uses. Uh, the, uh, what the, what the developer has alerted us to, they have a senior partner that they are working very closely with. They have been actually for a long period of time. Um, during COVID, those negotiations basically stopped for about six months. And so they have asked that the senior component alone also have an extension on its closing date. Uh, one of the main principles in the comprehensive agreement is that all of Phase One closes at the same time. And that's how we know we get the, the, you know, the hotel, the office, um, and the retail components that have always been very desirable to the city. Um, um, in this agreement, we do have an agreement to allow some flexibility on the closing of the senior component for up to nine months. Um, one of the reasons that, uh, that is something that I do feel comfortable in recommending is that all of our experience has been that there is a strong market for senior housing in the city. Um, and it is my belief that that is simply a practical problem that the developer is having with a known, um, partner for the senior in terms of their ability to close, um, in this December timeframe, which is the target, uh, closing date. Um, th- one of the concerns in that is, that we had earlier was whether that had other, because we've been looking sort of for the, the, the Big Bang, uh, theory for this whole project, did having a later closing date for the senior component have other spillover effects that we hadn't contemplated or that were otherwise eroding the city's, uh, position? And, you know, that was enshrined in the comprehensive agreement. And one of the things that I think we worked through just in the last, kind of last meeting with the development team is a clarification on those. And I think we feel comfortable, uh, that there aren't those spillover concerns that we initially, uh, had with the language as it was presented to us. So there's some, uh, so I wanted to report on that and also have the opportunity for any questions on that, uh, on that topic as well. All right, thank you. So do we have another hand up? Is Mr. Lichtenhouse have a question?
Y- yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor. Um, this one's related to the development, although, although off topic of the CA, but I didn't realize that the developers are going to be joining us. Um, so Evan, if you wouldn't mind, um, we had a question come in from, um, one of our ESC members a few hours ago. The, uh, demolition of the, um, high school, have you guys, are you guys going out to bid for deconstruction and salvaging for those materials, given the longer lead time?
Uh, you know what, I'd have, we'll have to get back to you on that. I kn- I mean, we're certainly going out to bid for the various components of demolition. I don't know what our plan is for the south, uh, whether we're, um, going to have a company come in to salvage the existing materials or not.
Okay.
But I can, I can give you that answer.
I'll just pass along this one comment, which was sent in a couple hours ago. And that is, um, given the longer lead time, if we have the ability for some of our local businesses to, to generate some revenue off of salvage, uh, decommissioning of that site and the fact that it may assist in helping get, you know, a point for lead certification that you guys considered doing that, um, that's all I've got. I just wanted to pass it on, it was relatively timely since you guys were joining us tonight. So thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember, appreciate it.
All right, other questions at this point? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, Ms. McCroskey's got some additional, um, information she's going to give us. Wyatt, were you done with what you had to say?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Um, Carol?
Okay. Um, thank you. I just wanted to mention that, uh, as Wyatt mentioned in the very beginning, we were working on this up to the very last minute. And as a result, um, you know, we've talked about some terms such as extending the time for the, um, senior housing developer to, um, close on the deal. But we have ensured that the closing will be at the initial date for the whole project. It's just that the senior housing developer may not be involved at that time. Um, and we have ensured that, um, 100% of the rent payments will be made based on the leases that we enter into at that closing. Um, but I think that, um, we have tried, some of these matters have not had every bit of language worked out for them, because our last call on this was at 5:30 this afternoon. So I do want to, um, simply suggest that the language of the resolution, which currently is a fairly standard format, that it would, um, you approve the First Amendment and authorize the city manager to sign it. But I think we would, what I'd like to do is, and sort of put this into the record now, um, to note that at the end of the current resolution, we should add the language after, in the form presented to city council, comma, and this is all new now, subject to one, necessary language changes to reflect the terms presented to council. And two, um, approval of the language by the city attorney and the city manager. And in that way, we can take only the provisions that you all have heard tonight and authorized and make sure that they get written into the agreement, because the final language for those changes has not been developed exactly. And some of the things, the important part that we're doing is just clarification, and so the language will be important. So my recommendation will be that when you, um, have a motion to adopt this TO, I'm sorry, TR 2053, um, you should add to it with the amendment as read into the record by the city attorney.
And just for clarification, let me just ask, um, this would not allow new provisions to be raised, new topics, things that aren't before us, that those would not be permitted? That you or the city, or the, uh, city manager would not be able to make additional changes? This pretty much shuts it down right now? Is that right?
That's correct. It's only the issues that have been presented to you tonight and that were included in the, um, the amendment as. the amendment as first presented. And so we cannot go beyond that without coming back to council. If there's a request to make an additional change, it's going to have to be brought back to you all.
Okay.
But this will allow us to develop the final language and make sure that it's clear. Frankly, some of the issues that came up were probably because of unclear drafts that had been prepared quickly. And so we need to make sure that we can finalize those in a way that we will be able to rely on in the future.
Again, but new issues cannot be raised without.
That's correct. No new issues, simply what has been approved and discussed tonight.
All right. Are there questions for Ms. McCroskey? Ms. Hardy?
Can we still bring the final draft through, kind of a meeting in the future for?
Well, I think the issue would be timing. This would authorize the city manager to sign it prior to it coming to you, but we can certainly send it out to council members. But I think everyone's hoping to get it done within the next couple of days.
I think I'd be fine with the language you proposed, but I think just for public transparency to kind of have the final version again reshared.
Okay, yeah, not, maybe I'm dismissing how you mean reshared. We would send it out to council, we could make it public. It would simply be a matter of, it probably wouldn't come back at a council meeting because it would be signed before then. We could certainly present it at a council meeting, but we would, I think all the parties want to try to execute it before another council meeting happens.
Can it just be posted as part of our next package so that even if it's signed, at least it's available to the public?
I think there's no problem with that. Certainly, it's a public document, we can do that. Maybe the manager can put something in his report on it as well.
And I would just add, I agree with everything that the city attorney has said.
Wow, that's a first.
That is a first, you're right. All right, other comments or questions for the city attorney? Madam Clerk, is there any public comment, either written or people waiting to speak tonight?
There is not.
Okay. So are there additional comments or questions that are not necessarily based on what we've just heard, but just general comments people want to make? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. Let me first ask a question about the CBA. And we, we note now that even though the city will incur the cost of creating it, the developer is not going to be contributing and paying for it. So just a quick question on the CDA for Wyatt. What functions does the CDA perform?
The, the function of the CDA would be to issue debt and assess a tax on the 10-acre site sufficient to pay the debt service for that, for that bond or that debt that's been issued. Those are the two principal functions.
What's the purpose of the money that will be raised with the debt?
The purpose of the money is for infrastructure, public infrastructure on the site.
Right, public infrastructure. All right, thanks very much. But you did mention that the developer previously had agreed to pay $2 million for that and is not now going to pay that, is that right? That's 2.5 million.
That's correct.
Thanks very much. So, Mr. Mayor, a couple of general comments. First of all, when this whole procurement process started, we had two proposals. One with a fairly short payment period, substantial payment period over a relatively short period of time. And this one, a very long and drawn out payment scheme. I felt that the other proposal was better, but after repeated public and private comments, that was rejected and we moved forward with this group. But that wasn't the first time this group demanded a restructuring that took risk from itself and imposed it on the city. And the city caved in on that time and that was a $7 million giveaway to the developer. Now we're confronted with an even larger giveaway, 9.5 million dollars plus a potential $2 million totaling a potential 11.5 million dollars. In addition, multiple delays have been demanded by the developer. So what we have basically is a restructuring of an agreement that the developer agreed to, using a legal theory which our council found invalid. And the city is now preparing to basically provide all these give backs to the developer in order to, to satisfy the developer. We take on the risk, the developer has less risk, the contract that was agreed to is basically torn up and significantly amended at the demand of the developer. Or they've, as I understand it, they were going to refuse to do the demolition and perform under the contract. I would have called the developer's bluff on all this. In addition, comments were made about, isn't it wonderful they're doing the demolition under this agreement? Well, they were required to do the demolition under the prior agreement. So when I look at this, it's not only monetary giveaways to the developer, but time giveaways to the developer, each of which independently shifts risk, significant risk to the city, certainly over to the short to medium term, if not forever. Also, because of the pattern and practice with this particular developer that we've seen from the beginning, I have no confidence that next week, next month, or next year, there'll be yet another demand to yet again restructure the contract to again remove risk from the developer and put it on to the city. So for all these reasons, I'm going to be voting against this amendment. Appeasement is never a good idea and I don't believe it's within the city's interest to appease the developer in this way. I would hold them for the contract, which they freely sign, and refuse the continual shifting of risk from the developer to the city. I don't believe that's in the city's long, short term or long-term best interests. I'll be voting against this proposed amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other comments that people would like to make? All right, do we have a motion then? Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Mayor, I moved to adopt TR 20-53 with the amendments as read into the record by the city department this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Connolly on the second? Do we have additional comment?
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, please.
I'll turn my egg timer on and try to be brief. So my effort here is to answer three questions. Will we still pay for the high school with this amended deal in the way that we represented the taxpayers that we would when we struck the original deal? The answer to that is yes. Will the demolition of the old high school proceed on pretty much the same calendar as we'd anticipated before? The answer to that seems to be yes. And third, will we be making a place that is still compelling, both in terms of uses by folks and financially compelling? I believe so. The most encouraging thing out of all this is despite a once in a century catastrophe, we are still trying to build a community of genuine mixed use with the grocery and offices and hotels and condominiums and rental apartments and senior living and civic spaces and open spaces and all the good things that we told the voters we were going to try to do. Do I wish that we weren't here? Sure. I wish the pandemic had never happened. But the pandemic did happen and we are here. And where I want to be is out in front of everyone else who is stalled now because of the pandemic and its impact on our economy. There's risk at being at the edge of, leading edge of change and we've seen what that risk is, but I'm more comfortable there than standing pat and standing back and letting the county and Wamata develop their properties adjacent to ours before we do. I would rather we be the first to set the tone and to set the table for what we want on our space. Today at the Virginia Municipal League's budget briefing, the expert on the budget observed that about a year ago, everything was swimmingly fine, but we were warned that there might be some sort of black swan event in our economy that would slow things down. Obviously, that did happen, but the good news is we, the city council, fostered, anticipated that, you know, the good times would not roll on forever. And we built into our plan of attack and our plan of finance a little cushion. Well, we're taking advantage of that cushion. I agree with Vice Mayor that we've taken advantage of the cushion probably for the last time. I'd be happy to hear from the applicants again with news that they're going to be able to do something faster than what they are now saying they can do. But nonetheless, the delay does not seem to me to be all that significant, given the scope of catastrophe that the economy has gone through in the last 11 months. So I would like, you know, the city to drive the hardest possible bargain that we can. That's our, that's our job and I don't fault anybody for trying to do that. But I would also like for the city to be in the community of developers with a reputation that we are trying to create a very positive business climate. And, you know, the benefits of doing that seemed obvious to me, both financially and in terms of place making. If we proceed as we, I hope will tonight, we should be spring loaded for very good things to happen later this year when we're finally out from under this pandemic. That is where I want to be in the fall. I want to be ready to move forward on the project that we've envisioned it and take advantage of what I hope and what many experts are saying will be, you know, a very significant surge in the economy. If we act tonight, as I hope we will, to move with this, we should be in a good position to get back on track with a project that will be good for the city, both financially and in terms of the mixed uses that it would bring to our community. So thank you for indulging me, my thoughts.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duncan. Does anyone else have any comments at this point? All right, we have a motion and a second. Unless there are any final comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lipton House?
Yes.
Ms. Shans Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Oh.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you all. I know this has been a lot of work all the way around and we appreciate it and let's get this project started. So anyway, thank you all. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is business not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to talk about as far as regional committee reports, council liaison reports and the like? All right, how about council member comments? Any council member comments? Anything else? Excuse me, all right. Anything else anybody would like to say before we adjourn? We do have a couple more hours if we can. All right, well, listen, is there anything else? Like I said, anything else anybody wants to say or we should go ahead and move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's do it. Thank you all and we'll see you after Martin Luther King Day.